We'll go ahead and get started. Thanks for your patience. Welcome to our earliest business meeting that I know of. It's February 11, 2025. The time is 9:02 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Everline and Duncan. And I'm not sure if Commissioner Mataris joining us by phone or not. But we will go ahead and listen for him to chime in. Please join me in a moment of silence. All right, and now our Pledge of Allegiance. Assistant Kovacs, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, are there changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Public comment? Okay, hearing none. Meeting minutes. So Commissioner Mataris, have you joined us? Does not sound like it. So would you like to make some motions? Because I can still make motions if you want to second them. Okay. Then I move that we approve meeting minutes, items one through five. Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye. All right. Consent calendar, which would be items six through nineteen. I move that we approve those.
Aye.
Commissioner Everline? Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye. And payables. I move that we approve the payables for February 3 through 7, 2025 in the amount of $837,086.36 along with jury panel payments in the amount of $925.13.
Second.
Yep, yeah. Commissioner Everline? Push your button here. Thank you. Did you yes it?
Yes.
Okay. Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Yes, aye.
Okay, item twenty-one, this is our status update, Justice Building update with Jeff Voller, our Director of Facilities. Go ahead.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Jeff Voller for the record. David Mendez apologizes, he, well, he may be here, but he's stuck in traffic on the freeway. He called me just before the meeting and said traffic is at a complete standstill, so he is not here. But I am here to talk a little bit about the furnishings for the new Justice Building. We received some pricing from Contract Design, the company that is putting together the furnishings for us last week, just before the meeting. And we felt like the pricing was really high. I know we mentioned that when we pulled it from the topic last week. And then just last night, about five o'clock, I got some, kind of some new concept designs of where they were going. I asked them to, you know, give us some options in a more economical line. And they sent us a few renderings of some things that I wanted to show you, just to make sure we're in agreement on whether we're going in the right direction or not. The first thing that I'd like, a little bit of discernment from you guys on, is if you look at the page that has the desks on it, so there's two different options for the desks. The one on the left in the gray is what they call, the company's HBC, but it is a particle board desk. And it's $1,130 per unit. That's an average price, because there will be a little bit of difference in pricings based off room configurations and sizes and such. But that's kind of an average per-unit price that we can go off of for that. And the $1,130 is the, including freight for that. And then the one on the right is a thermally fused laminate desk. That one's a little bit more. It's $1,425 and freight is included in that price. And the thermally fused laminate is a little bit stronger designed because of that thermally fused in the laminate versus a particle board. You know, anytime, you know, you get those particle board desks, screws tend to strip out on those over time and things. So it probably is worth spending a little bit more money on the desk on the right to go with the thermally fused laminate. But I'd kind of like your discernment on that as well and make sure, you know, we are in agreement on that. And just for reference, then, that is coming down from original pricing where they were in a solid wood desk in a little bit higher-end furniture line, which was averaging about $2,200 a desk. So we're down considerably for that. You know, just kind of using some really rough numbers, at approximately $750 saving per desk. If we're in this thermally fused line, that's $46,000 of savings right there in that. And so those are kind of the two options she's shown us right now. Both of these are adjustable height desks. So the return on the left of those desks will rise up. You know, that's definitely been a thing within the county. And we have a lot of the very desks and things. So this will be incorporated into the desk design that we'll be using for that. So I would like kind of your discernment to make sure we're going in the right direction on this. And they would, Contract Design would like a little bit of guidance on, you know, if we do want to go with the thermally fused or the particle board.
Okay. Mark, do you have questions on that? Do you have a preference?
I do. I'm picky about chairs.
So we're on desks right now. We'll get to chairs in a second.
Okay.
So do you have a preference between the $1,100 particle board or the $1,400 laminate?
Well, a piece of laminate might hold up better than a piece of particle board.
I agree. I agree.
Can we see samples of those things?
We are under timeline with that. I can request samples and see what we can get for that.
Okay, gotta be good.
They would like a decision pretty quick so that they can continue with building out designs and things. So it seems like we lean towards the thermally fused, but you'd like to see it?
Well, if I'm gonna pick something, I want to make sure we do it right the first time. That's what I want to have.
Right, so do we think it'll take a while to get a sample?
I do not know.
Okay. I mean, when you talk about a sample, are they just gonna give us a piece? They're not gonna bring the whole desk in, are they?
That would be my assumption. That they'd probably call the manufacturer and ask for a cutout of it.
Okay. And then Chair Mataris, did you join us? Just want to make sure, he's part of the conversation if he does. So I agree, I think we should go down the laminate side. And if we can get a sample before the drop dead date, that would be our preference to look at that. But if we're not able to get it before we have to order, because now we're on a timeline of, they need to be in by June, correct?
I guess that puts the light of fire under their feet.
Okay. All right, so we're giving tentative direction to go that way. However, we can't give final until we get something in our hands, it sounds like.
All right.
All right, go ahead.
And then as far as chairs, there were a couple options for chairs. Originally, they were quoting us chairs that were in around a $500 range. And we said, you know, generally, we do not spend nearly that much within the county when we purchase chairs. And so she came back with a couple of options. The very first one would be what you call the task chair or the desk chair, that is in a price range of $166 per chair. And then the second chair would be what they're proposing for the conference rooms. And we'd probably also use the same chair for the attorney desks in the courtrooms and such. And again, and that one is from, went from a $580 chair to a $246 chair. So I think we're definitely more in lines that are affordable. There are options for adjustable arms on these. I don't know what that would add to cost. That's a question I do have on this. I do know that she mentioned, when we go more towards this more economical line of chair, the options are somewhat limited. But she felt like this was a pretty good chair that would meet the quality standard and a price point that would be within our range.
Okay, thoughts on chairs?
I'd like to see one.
And I, David Mendez with Turner and Townsend here. I did ask for the chairs. As far as the desks, I didn't pursue that. So I think what Jeff said is probably the route that we would go, is get samples of what that material looks like. On, back on the desks, so my experience with that particle board is it does not hold up. So we'll really need to look at it as more of an investment rather than just the cheapest alternative, so. But as far as the chairs go, I got mixed results or mixed feedback from the different departments, whether they wanted the adjustable armrests or not. If it's law enforcement, they tend to not want that. It gets in the way of their utility belts. And so, so I, we'll have to, as far as those options go, we'll have to go department by department in that regard.
All right, just let us know when you get samples in as soon as possible. And then we'll be able to get it on the next available meeting. Could have a special meeting if the time dictated it.
Maybe after a meeting or something like that, where we're not taking up your time with the public.
Sure. The final decision will have to be made on the record, though.
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We'll get that in front of you before we, before we enter the final order.
Okay. Anything else on desks and chairs?
I'm picky about desks, because I've built many, many of them.
Yep. All right, anything else on the update?
Just one item that I don't believe I got back to you with last week. We had the results of the, we've talked previously about a budget of $120,000 that we have for the repeaters, for radios internally to the building. That's going to take the existing building and the new building into account. The result came back a little mixed. The areas, the secure areas where we have CMU block as the interior walls did not perform very well. So we're gonna have to have numerous repeaters per floor, per area. So we're currently getting pricing on that to see that our, that our budget is going to handle that. We had preliminary pricing prior to the testing. The testing had to wait until we had interior walls up in the building. And that did occur about three weeks ago. And so we're waiting for the pricing on that. I'll get back to you as soon as I can on that.
All right, any questions about that?
No.
Okay. Is that it?
That's all I have for you now.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. All right, item twenty-two, this is a status update item, and it's team's discovery. And Grant Kinsey, are you on the line? All right, well, we will just leave that until later, just in case he ends up getting on the line with us. All right, items twenty-three and twenty-four can be handled together. This is renewals of three-year terms for the 700 megahertz MOUs with Cootney County Adult Misnomer Probation and Cootney County Coroner's Office. Colin McRoy, are you on the line?
Yes, good afternoon, good morning Commissioners, Colin McRoy, Cootney County Sheriff's Office, 911. These again are the 700 megahertz MOU renewals for AMP and Coroner's Office, who have rages on the trunk system and would like to continue using said system. And their MOU is just up for renewal and your approval.
All right, Mark, any questions?
No.
I move that we approve the three-year renewal of the 700 megahertz MOUs with Cootney County Adult Misnomer Probation and Cootney County Coroner.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner? Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye. Item twenty-five, Statement of Work. This is the master agreement dated 12/21/2021, XTR Consulting with our Chief Deputy Treasurer, Jill Smith.
Good morning. In front of you, you have the final statement of work that we discussed last week at our special meeting between the Treasurer's Office and XTR Consulting. This is to test the fixes that have been put in place with the Simpatico patch. Does anyone have questions?
Questions, Mark?
No.
Okay. I move that we approve the Statement of Work alongside the master agreement dated 12/21/21 with XTR Consulting.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye. All right, item twenty-six, Grant Application AIP 063 for the FY25 bipartisan infrastructure law funding with the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of $496,960 with a cash match from Fund 30 in the amount of $13,078. And it looks like Ms. Stevenson along with Ms. Sickford, please.
Good morning Commissioners, Kim Stevenson with the airport and Cory Sickford with our Dura for the record. This is the grant application for AIP 63, which is FY25.
Ma'am, could you speak a little louder?
Oh, sorry. FY25 bill funding with the FAA. We have three projects that we're working on with this grant. Relocation of the Mauser, which accounts for $288,810 of the total. Our vehicle design, which is $25,947 of the total. And Taxiway Alpha preliminary design for the rehabilitation of it, That makes the project total $523,000, excuse me, And that reimbursement through the FAA is at 95% for FY25. We're not 100% sure on the state. We're anticipating 2.5% from the state and 2.5% then from the county. And this is an application.
Okay, perfect. Any questions on this?
No.
All right, I move that we approve the grant application, AIP 063, for the FY25 bill funding with FAA.
I concur.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye. All right, item twenty-seven, Airport Work Order. This is WO24-013, and it's for Taxiway Alpha Preliminary Design with our Dura Group and Ms. Stevenson.
Kim Stevenson for the record. This is work order for scope of work for Taxiway Alpha Rehabilitation, Phase One Preliminary Design. The total is $205,866.85. And these are FY25 dollars. We're looking for potentially FY26 for design completion and Phase Three of construction in FY27. And is this in AIP 62 also?
The, this work order, 24-013, is in the grant application that you just approved.
Okay. So do we start work before the application's approved?
Typically.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Everything that we bring to you has already been gone through with the FAA. We put together our capital improvement plan and present that to the FAA and go over it with our ADO and actually the state as well. So we're all on the same page with where our projects are going.
Okay. Questions?
No.
All right, I move that we approve Airport Work Order, WO24-013, for the Taxiway A Preliminary Design with our Dura.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye. All right, item twenty-eight, Board Approval Request. This is the Avista Electric Service Agreement, number 59142, for the Taxiway C Project in the airport. Ms. Stevenson.
Kim Stevenson for the record. This electric service agreement with Avista is $100,210.96, reimbursable under AIP 062, which is 90% federal, 2.5% state, and 7.5% county. This is for the Taxiway Charlie project. And can you add anymore stuff?
Cory Sickford with our Dura for the record. It just relocates the Avista line on the airport property to where Taxiway Charlie will be extended to along the fence. And then it goes out to serve the approach lighting system and the Mauser. So it's a relocation project. And it is currently under an AIP Grant 062 that has been, was awarded in September.
Okay, it's about $100,000 for this project?
Yes.
Okay. All right, questions?
No.
All right, I move that we approve the Avista Electric Service Agreement, number 59142, for the Taxiway C Project.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, item twenty-nine, Grant Agreement F258 COE. This is with Idaho Transportation Department in the amount of $105,556. And our cash match is $105,556. Ms. Stevenson.
Kim Stevenson again for the record. Commissioners, I do apologize, I put the county match in there incorrectly. So the state kind of, they've been reimbursing at 5% for several years now. And this year, when they, we received the grant agreement for AIP 62, they had submitted a 2.5% reimbursement on the agreement. So we reached out to the aviation planner with the state who said that over $46 million was distributed to Idaho airports. And the state arrow funding was not enough to support 5% across the board on all grants. Therefore, they decided for AIP projects to reimburse that 2.5%, which leaves the county match at 7.5%, which we did not anticipate when we put through the application for this project. So this agreement is confirming the state reimbursement at $105,556, which is 2.5% of the project roughly total of $4.2 million. And I'd like to adjust our county match to 7.5% at $316,666.67.
Okay, and that works out okay with what you've saved in your match funds?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a question on that, Mark?
Yeah, so how much did the state give up? Or cut their budgets?
Well, it's kind of interesting that they, I don't know how much they saved across the board for the whole state. But they do have some excess funding and will be bringing forward an application for state dollars only for a project.
For what? For a state? Just, you said, you, state what?
For state dollars only.
Okay.
So I think whatever they saved by not giving everybody 2.5% on AIP projects, there is an excess now. And they'll have, they have dollars left over.
All right.
All right. Any other questions on this one?
No, it's fine.
Okay, I move that we approve Grant Agreement F258 COE with the Idaho Transportation Department in the amount of $105,556. And, let's see, Kim, I don't know that I caught the whole, our cash match, which is $316,666.67? I guess I caught it.
So be it.
Okay.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye. All right, item thirty, this is another grant agreement. And it is F25B COE with the Idaho Transportation Department in the amount of $43,598 and cash match $43,598 with the airport. So, Ms. Stevenson.
Kim Stevenson for the record. This is the grant agreement from the state confirming their match portion for AIP 61. Project total for this grant, $871,952. 5% each from the county and the state at $43,598. And this is one of three grants for our Taxiway Charlie project. And the reason this is at 5% reimbursement from the state is because it is bill funding. They did decide for the bipartisan infrastructure law funding that they could match the 5%.
All right, questions on this one?
Nope.
All right, I move that we approve Grant Agreement F25B COE with Idaho Transportation Department, the amount of $43,598.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye. Item thirty-one, Lease Addendum AAL 2022-1500. This is a lot decrease with 33 Wolves LLC. Ms. Stevenson.
Kim Stevenson for the record. This is an addendum to AAL 2022-1500 with 33 Wolves. This is a corner lot at the airport that originally, the entire parcel was leased at about three and a half acres. The, the next item on there, on the agenda, was developed. And we have since split the parcel. And the addendum adjusts the lot size to 60,271 square feet. That makes the annual land rent $15,911.54.
Okay, questions? All right, I move that we approve the lease addendum, AAL 2022-1500. It's a lot decrease with 33 Wolves LLC.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye. All right, item thirty-two, Ground Lease AAL 2025-200. This is a hangar purchase with Electronics International, Inc., which is related to the previous item. Ms. Stevenson.
Kim Stevenson. This is ground lease, AAL 2025-200. A hangar was developed on that two-thirds section of that corner lot. And Electronics International has purchased a hangar and, for their business, aviation manufacturing, research and development, and installation facility. And the lot is 93,672,000 square feet for an annual revenue of $29,413.
All right, questions?
Nope.
All right, I move that we approve Ground Lease AAL 2025-200, which is the hangar purchase from Electronics International, Inc.
So be it. So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Sheriff Pro Tim Duncan?
Aye, thank you. All right, item 33, Board Approval Request. This is to convert a temporary deputy director position to permanent with our community development and Director Callahan. This is your temporary position conversion to a permanent position.
Yes, and this is presumably a formality because of your last decision not being properly noticed on the agenda.
Correct, it's from last Thursday. So, any questions on this one?
No.
All right, I move that we approve the conversion from a temporary deputy director position to a permanent deputy director position.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Sheriff Pro Tim Duncan?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, item 34, Board Approval Request. This is to ratify the position conversion of Position Number 091-006 from a residential appraiser lead to a residential appraiser two and our assessor's office.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is to ratify the decision made last week in the HR meeting.
Okay, questions, Mark?
No.
Okay, I move that we approve the position conversion of 091-006 from residential appraiser lead to residential appraiser two.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Sheriff Pro Tim Duncan?
Aye. All right, item 35, Board Approval Request. And this is a request of higher duty pay to the Cadastral MAP Specialist Lead 101-001 in the assessor's office.
Good morning, Commissioners. As we discussed in last week's HR meeting, the board requested we bring this back in kind of a different form, in the form of higher duty pay, which is why it's on today's agenda. Do you guys have a projection for this in front of you?
Let me see if it's.
I have it written out for you if you need it.
Yeah, we don't have the projection here. Okay, so this is for both items?
Yes, so this is both items. This shows the back pay going to October 1st of last year, and then if it goes through the rest of this fiscal year, that's what the cost would be. We currently have $68,000 of salary savings, so this would easily fall under that amount.
Okay, and then in the budget season, we will deal with if there's anything else in this realm?
Yes, I think after further discussion, just to let the board know, we probably will be coming back to you with a request to reevaluate the position, given its current responsibilities. It seems like it might need another HR evaluation.
Okay.
Just where it's currently at.
Right, and so the new process for that is you come before us, you explain the whole thing, then you get to go to HR and through the process and all that.
Yes, so just want to alert the board, we'll be bringing that back as an HR request.
Okay, any questions? Mark?
So be it.
All right, I move that we approve the higher duty pay to the Cadastral MAP Specialist Lead, Position 101-001.
Aye.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Sheriff Pro Tim Duncan?
Aye, and so that is for going this pay period on, or whatever the next pay period falls on. And then our next item is the approval of higher duty pay bonus to Cadastral Mapping Specialist Lead, and this is October 1 through February 8, 2025. And so that covers, because it's difficult to go back and give back pay, it's easier to do the one-time bonus for our auditor's office and our payroll. Any questions on that, Mark?
No.
Commissioners?
Yes.
I'm Bayle Covax County Assessor, for the record. I would like to make a comment on, and I should have spoke up sooner, on both Agenda Item 34, which was what you just approved for the lead position, as well as these two Agenda Items, 35 and 36. I'm referencing the meeting that occurred last week, Thursday. What I'd like to say, and I can't get my laptop to work, I wanted to email something to put up on the screen to present to the Commissioners, but the situation that we encountered with the lead appraisers, as well as the cadastral technician, was an unavoidable issue. Yes, it is a mid-year change. It could not have been avoided. I have a PowerPoint, I have an illustration to show you all the things that transpired. Suffice it to say that in the summer, in August, and I'm talking about the lead position now, the lead appraiser, the Board of County Commissioners, the third week of August advertised the budget. That was as a result of all the budget deliberations. The following week, on the 27th of August, we received an unexpected submission of a resignation by the lead appraiser. So the die was already cast as far as the budget being advertised. That is something we could not have brought to the board. Besides that, both Geisner and I were in Denver at an assessor conference, and so we really couldn't address that issue until, and so by definition, it's what you might call an unavoidable mid-year request.
I think you made that clear at last week.
I wasn't there last week.
It might not have been with, well, I mean, it was made clear last week that this was a necessary thing, so.
Well, what my concern is, it was presented by the Commissioners last week that we had actually made a job offer for a position that was not open. That is not a correct statement. We had three valid positions open. The approval that the board just gave for the community development, that is a mid-year request, that was not incorporated into the budget. That's $124,000 for that position. And it was all done and approved by the board because it was salary savings. Our situation is no different. And so I just, it sends the wrong message, and I just wanted to correct that message publicly and make it part of the record. And I will send documents to Jonathan so he can incorporate it and make it part of the record.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. I move that we approve the higher duty pay bonus to the Cadastral Mapping Specialist Lead, 101-001, for the time period of October 1, '24 through February 8 of '25.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Sheriff Pro Tim Duncan?
Aye. All right, item 37, Board Approval Request, the Back Country UTV replacement of snow tracks in our Sheriff's Rec Safety Department with Sergeant Miller, please.
Good morning, Commissioner. Sergeant Ryan Miller, for the record. I am reporting today seeking approval for an out-of-budget general fund balance request in the amount of $10,000 for a replacement set of snow tracks for our back country search and rescue emergency response vehicle, it's a UTV, 2021 Polaris Ranger. We currently have a set of 2011 snow tracks on it. They have broken two times, this last time being a catastrophic failure of the internal components, leaving us stranded about 30 miles out in the back country. So this is a need. The initial reason for going with the 2011 tracks, we retrofitted them from an old set, an old UTV, and we were trying to save some money, and that's not showing that that was a good decision at this point, so we are asking for an out-of-budget request.
How many seasons did the old tracks get used on the new vehicle?
It's a 2021, we outfitted it in 2022, so this would be our third season now.
Okay, I think that was a good savings.
Absolutely.
So, all right, so again, this is asking for general fund, so kind of come out of fund balance, $10,000 to get these tracks replaced. Any questions on that?
How far did you have to walk?
We didn't actually, we got kind of rescued, I have to give them a plug now, I guess. Snowgroomers Director Nick Schneider came out on a day off of his, and he brought us a tire, and we were able to have someone meet him down at the trailhead, brought the tire back out to us, and we put the tire on it and had to limp it back into town. So there are pictures all over the internet now of me with a broken side-by-side. But I will say, on the way down, we had a snowmobile that was, recreational snowmobile that was off the side of a cliff, so we did use our broken UTV to still bring that up, and everyone was okay, so it still worked out.
Yeah, it did work out.
Yes, sir.
Good. All right, you all right with that, Mark?
Pardon?
You're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, I move that we approve the request for the back country UTV replacement of the snow tracks, not to exceed $10,000 from fund balance.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Sheriff Pro Tim Duncan?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, item 38, Board Approval Request, the internal reassignment of the KCSO Mobile Command Center to KC Fairgrounds in our Sheriff's Patrol Division. Lieutenant Sifford, thank you for being incredibly patient this morning.
No problem. Lieutenant Zachary Sifford, for the record, the Sheriff's Office is just requesting board approval to reassign that asset to the fair.
All right, any questions on this?
No.
All right, I move that we approve the internal reassignment of the KCSO Mobile Command Center to the fairgrounds.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Sheriff Pro Tim Duncan?
Aye, and just so we know, Lieutenant Sifford, you're going out for grants for the replacement to a better, suitable mobile command center?
I'm working with Tiffany. We certainly have the funds to equip one, but that may be a board request down the line of coming up with some money to purchase the trailer itself, and then there's plenty of grant money available between 911 and OEM to outfit it.
All right, I guess just keep us appraised of that.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, item 39, Resolution 2025-03. This is an asset deletion request for the LiveScan Plus System with our Sheriff's Office. Captain Deek, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Captain Andy Deek, for the record. Before you, you should have Resolution Number 2025-03 for surplus equipment and asset deletion. We, in FY24, replaced a DataWorks LiveScan Plus fingerprinting system, so we are looking to finally delete the asset, former asset, number 7,932 from our records.
All right, any questions on that, Mark?
No.
All right, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-03, which is asset deletion request for the LiveScan Plus System.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Sheriff Pro Tim Duncan?
Aye, and item, back to item 22, Mr. Kinsey, have you joined us by telephone?
Which one was it?
Item 22, it's the Teams Discovery Discussion Only. Okay, since I do not hear Mr. Kinsey on the line, I would ask for public comment. Anything, Jonathan? Nope. All right, 9:41, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.